All right. Okay, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the Monday, June 12, 2023, meeting of the Falls Church City Council to order and ask that you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. The flag is behind me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Madam Clerk, will you call roll, please?
Yes, sir. Ms. Conley, here. Mr. Duncan?
Here.
Ms. Hardy, here. Ms. Leon?
Here.
Ms. Sean Hiscott will be 20 minutes late, I think, for a work event. Mr. Snyder? Oh.
Here.
Mayor Tarter?
Here.
Thank you. And I think there is a motion for Mr. Duncan to participate remotely.
Well, there could be. Let's see if somebody wants to make that motion.
Mr. Duncan, can you identify the reason for your participation by electronic means?
Medical reasons.
Thank you. Mayor, I move that the City Council approve electronic participation by Phil Duncan in this meeting for medical reasons pursuant to the City Council's policy for remote participation in City Council meetings as adopted by Resolution 2023-06.
Second.
And, Mr. Duncan, can you state your location?
214 Southwest Street here in Falls Church.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan? Oh, nope, you don't get to vote. Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Leon?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
And Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you, Council.
All right. Thank you. So let's go on to adoption of the meeting agenda. Would anyone here like to make the meeting agenda? Mr. Duncan?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt the meeting agenda as presented.
Back in business. All right. Do we have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? The ayes have it. So we have a very special proclamation this evening, and I'm wondering, Mr. Shields, is Dana Lewis, or I guess now Dana Jones, going to do the honors? I see her listed on our agenda, but I don't see her in the room.
I would be happy to, Cindy and I would be happy to join for this part of the...
All right. Well, that would be wonderful. Why don't you all set us all up here?
Okay. So we are joined tonight by Mr. Ron Brusseau, who is the recipient of the Steve Sprague Housing Champion Award for the current year. And Mr. Brusseau is recognized for his incredibly high quality of contributions in the area of affordable housing, as well as his length of service. He was on the founding board for Homestretch, which is one of the pillars of our community to help people transition from homelessness to permanent housing and provide just incredible lasting support for our community with Homestretch. And he's been a longtime member of the Friends of the Falls Church Shelter. That is our hypothermia shelter that operates here in the city of Falls Church. Mr. Brusseau was also there for the drafting of the city's affordable housing policies, which we update from time to time, but he was there at the beginning to help us establish our affordable housing policies that we implement with the creation of our Affordable Housing Fund, but also through inclusionary zoning with every land use application that comes through the process. So Mr. Brusseau had a wonderful reception with the Housing Commission last month, and we wanted to take the opportunity tonight to invite him to a City Council meeting so he could be recognized and celebrated before the full City Council. And Ms. Mester, is there anything that you would like to add as well?
A couple of comments, and I know many of you were at the reception as well. I think Mr. Brusseau really shows the commitment to the community and the public service. So all the accolades just underpin the value of the community, and I appreciate the service to the community. One of the things I loved when I was hearing some of the stories behind the scene maybe is the love of data. I didn't realize that and how committed to having data to show the success. And I think that's a really important piece. And I loved listening to Mr. Faye's story about the data and insisting that there's data to measure the outcome. And that's what's helped make Homestretch a strong pillar of the community because they are successful and they can show it. But the homeless shelter is such an important part of our community continuum of care, especially during the cold weather. And so I was glad to be at that reception and also here to help celebrate this wonderful service to the community and for the award named after somebody who's certainly a mentor and a role model in that regard to with Mr. Sprague. Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Shields?
Thank you. And, Mr. Brusseau, congratulations on a distinguished, a long and distinguished career of service here to the city, and particularly the most vulnerable members of our community, those who are homeless or in need of affordable housing or transitioning from very difficult times. So I know we all, as a City Council, greatly appreciate your fine work and service to our community. We'd love to invite you up for our handshakes and congratulations and a photo. And if you'd like to say any words, you're most welcome to speak or to bring your family up as well.
First of all, let me thank you, Housing Commission, and all the Housing and Human Services staff for all the hard work and advocacy they've done for affordable housing in the city over the years. They've been a strong advocate for that. And thank you also, City Council members, for your support of the changes that's been being done in affordable housing to improve our chances of increasing the number of units in this city. One example that comes to mind very quickly is the increase of the minimum of 10% and the increase of a lifetime of affordable housing, not just 10 or 15 years as it was before. That was a tremendous change. Unfortunately, in data, it's been a tough decade for affordable housing in the city. We've gone from 470 units in 2012 to about 253 in 2022, and the feels is on the brink of some problems probably in 2027. City Council has undertaken a lot of initiatives, I know, and to provide additional resources to increase the number of additional units, such as the partnership with Wesley Housing and other developments in Virginia Village. But I believe many years ago, the key to the future of housing in the city is to assure that there exist sufficient funds in the Affordable Housing Fund to make the city in a position to partner with new affordable housing developments as they become available, either in the city or with neighbors, because the problem will always exist, and you will have to be ready to be able to participate in that. So thank you for the opportunity to serve these years, and I will continue to serve as long as I'm a citizen as possible. Thank you.
How about you come down for a photo? We'll give you our congrat...
You go, Mom. I'll take the picture.
Right here in front of us. All right, we're going to do one. Jesse, share.
Well, here comes Mrs. Scott.
Don't take a picture, Cindy.
Okay. You can share.
All right. So while we're doing that, are there any oaths of office to administer, Madam Clerk?
Yes. We do have two new members of the Library Board, Stephen Morse and Robert Leopold.
All right. Will you all come to the podium, and you can take your oaths of office? The clerk will administer them momentarily?
Welcome. And if you can raise your right hand, do you, Stephen Morse, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as a member of the Library Board of Trustees according to the best of your abilities? So help you God.
I will.
Thank you. And Robert, if you want to raise your right hand, do you, Robert Leopold, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as a member of the Library Board of Trustees according to the best of your ability? So help you God.
I will.
Thank you both, and you are ready to assume your duties on the Library Board. And if you'd like to come up, we'd love to have a photo with you as well.
Yeah, come on down. Thank you for your service to our community. All right. Seat of public comment, but we're going to start with the Planning Commission's annual report. And we've got a planning commissioner right here. Welcome.
Good day, Mayor Tarter and members of Council. I'm Tim Stevens, and I'm pleased to represent the city's Planning Commission in our 2022 annual report to you. So the link to access the full report is on the agenda this evening, and I see that there's also some hard copies looking very nicely out on the table in the lobby. So instead of focusing on that, I'll focus on some points of context. So the Planning Commission advises City Council on a number of development issues. We review the annual capital improvements plan, and we also recommend updates to key planning documents, such as the comprehensive plan and the small area plans. Our work activities are specified both by state code and our city charter. So, and we're also increasingly guided by your two-year work plan. At the end of last year, Planning Commissioner Melissa Teat stepped down after 12 years of service on the Planning Commission. We will miss her substantial knowledge and experience, and we'll look for an appropriate opportunity to publicly express our thanks for her many years of service. Thanks also goes to Brent Krasner, who was our chair during the pandemic years, as he guided us through the era of virtual meetings. So a special thanks to Jack Traynor, our commission clerk, and Planning Director Paul Stoddard, who is our staff liaison. Their work is essential to our functioning. I consider the Planning Commission to be a partner with Council in implementing the policies that you adopt. There are several ways that we can provide some value added beyond the recommendations and resolutions that we send to you. One is allowing members of the public to express their point of view. Given that the reach of our agendas is not quite as extensive as yours, we have some more time to engage in public hearings on key issues of importance, as well as welcoming written comments from the public. In recent years, we've initiated a speaker series whereby we invite knowledgeable individuals to share their expertise on issues that are important to us. These sessions are recorded and available to everyone on the city's website. On June 7, we had a staff expert from Arlington who spoke on their interesting efforts to implement green streets designs. This past December, we heard from the graduate students at nearby Virginia Tech who researched how to improve biking conditions in the city. The annual report explains how to access these presentations. We're well into 2023, so I will highlight that we've had a particularly busy year thus far. Two quick examples: Our work continues with updates to existing T-zone text language. T-zones were originally adopted in 1950s, and after 70 years, it could be argued that there's a need for some modifications. Developing the East End Small Area Plan has significantly increased our awareness of the needs of those connected to the Eden Center, for whom many, this is their second home. Our public listening session in January made it clear that we needed new methods of gaining public input. Our recommendation to you, adopted at our last meeting, relied a lot on that input. Finally, I'll end by mentioning that members of the Planning Commission are not city employees. They are city residents appointed by City Council, and they volunteer their services, which often requires setting aside a number of hours reviewing background documents, as well as participating in meetings that not infrequently go past 11 o'clock. I'm continuously impressed with their dedication to wanting to improve our city, and we benefit much from their extensive knowledge in areas such as transportation, urban design, affordable housing, architecture, environmental issues, and many others as well. It's one of my goals to do what I can to make the experience of serving on the Planning Commission worthwhile for them. So this concludes my report, and speaking on behalf of my colleagues on the Planning Commission, we look forward to working with you to achieve our goals for the rest of 2023. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Stevens. Yep, there we go. Thank you very much. We know you all have been busy and been an integral part of the particular busy development cycle we've been through these past few years, getting the new school built, and just so many things that have been on your plate. So I want to offer my thanks to you, but to the entire body, the entire Commission, for the great work you all have done and the great partner you've been to, the City Council, in advising and assisting us in our common work. I want to go ahead and open up to questions from my colleagues or comments. Who does? Oh, Phil. Hi, Phil. I didn't see you there on the computer. Mr. Duncan, did you have a comment or question for Mr. Stevens?
Yeah. Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Good. Agree with everything you said. Just wanted to make a note that I'd asked to be assigned as the council liaison to the Planning Commission about a year and a half ago, I think. And I just want to commend Chair Stevens and all the members of the Planning Commission for their hard work, their thoughtful work. Watching their meetings is really a pleasure because they're good listeners. Although many of the votes end up being 7-0 or maybe 6-1, I'm struck by different perspectives that people bring to the Planning Commission, the planning commissioners. And, you know, not everybody agrees with everything in some of the legislation that they've passed on, but there's a willingness and an interest in trying to find some common ground and to keep moving forward, which is the most important thing. And particularly Chair Stevens, I think, does a great job of listening politely, and, you know, folks come, some folks are not very happy because some of these issues hit people literally where they live. And he does a great job of listening carefully and factoring in what he hears, as do all the commissioners, in the final comments that they make and the decisions that they reach. So I just want to thank them for their service and appreciate the long hours that they put in on some very technical issues. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Duncan. Other comments that people have or questions? Ms. Hardy?
Thank you. Thanks for joining us, Tim. So I'll echo what Phil said. You've really been a steady, calm voice, especially through the two big recent things that you really did the heavy lifting on between T-zones and the East End Small Area Plan. So thank you for your work on that and your leadership. Also been impressed with just the diversity of thought and, I think, the expertise of the Planning Commission between housing, transportation, and most recently, architecture and design. You guys are a really good, well-rounded group, and so I certainly trust a lot of the recommendations that come out of you all. So thank you for that. One request. So I love the speaker series that you had and joined you all last week when you had the Greening Streets. And I think previously, you've had Jenny Schutz from the Brookings Institute and really just experts on various planning matters. I would love to see that invite extended not only to Council, but also some other boards and commissions. So for example, like the Greening Streets one, you know, that would have been a great one for Public Utilities Commission, who's probably very interested in stormwater, probably would have been interested in going to that. So maybe they can watch the recording, or Urban Forestry, or CACT. But because you guys are bringing in such great speakers, it'd be great to see more kind of cross-board collaboration, just so that they're exposed a lot of the same thinking and ideas out there, too.
Good suggestion. Consider it done.
Great. Thank you.
All right. Unless there's any other comments, I want to again thank you, as my colleagues have all done as well, and look forward to further collaboration. Thanks much. All right, let's move on to summary of written comments. Madam Clerk?
Yes, we had several comments on the proposed East End Small Area Plan. Dr. Jennifer Tron, executive director of the Progressive Vietnamese-American Organization, wrote to support the current version of the East End Small Area Plan and its inclusion of anti-displacement programming to protect Vietnamese small businesses and endorse the Community Demands Letter submitted by Viet Place Collective that was sent on April 19 regarding the plan. Seema Agnani, who is the CEO of National Coalition for Asian-Pacific American Community Development, wrote in support of the revised version of the East End Small Area Plan and its inclusion of anti-displacement programming to protect Vietnamese small businesses. They also endorsed the Community Demands Letter submitted by the Viet Place Collective on April 19. On T-zones, we received a number of comments in advance of your June 5 work session last week. Nader Baruk supports a requirement for affordable housing as part of the density bonuses, but opposes allowing developers to provide cash rather than affordable units in the development. Shirley Konik of 301 Parker Avenue wrote with concerns about tree preservation in T-zones. The following wrote in opposition to outline concerns about and provided suggestions about the current T-zones proposal. David Beto, Norman and Barbara Brand, Sally A. Brett of 205 Katy Court, Fred Thompson on behalf of the Broadway Condominium Association, Paul Bug of 704 Park Avenue, Bob Clark of 701 Fulton Avenue, Cynthia Garner, 219 East Columbia Street, Lynn Hall, Linda Walter Kamel, Lawton Street, who supported the submission from city residents who support responsible development, Paul and Jennifer King, William Romanius of 413 Park Avenue, Leslie Rye, 214 Lawton Street, Edith Holmes Snyder, 116 Great Falls Street, provided comments on behalf of city residents who support responsible development, who are Mary Chavis, 215 Lawton Street, Erin Flynn, 222 Little Falls Street, Charlie Lord, 222 Little Falls Street, Peng Heinem, 206 North Lee Street, Maritza Hyde, 423 Park Avenue, Linda Ann Messick, 425 Park Avenue, Edith Snyder, 116 Great Falls Street, Sarah Snyder, 306 North Maple Avenue, Lauren Thomas, 310 Lawton Street, Diane Trent of 420 Park Avenue, provided comments on behalf of Great Forest HOA, which was signed by Diane and Mark Trent of 420 Park Avenue, Bill and Renee Andrews, 410 Park Avenue, Connie Watts, 424 Park Avenue, Anne O'Neil, 200 Pennsylvania Avenue, Elizabeth Jackson and C. Howie Hodges, 204 Pennsylvania Avenue, Claudia and Dave Wicks, 412 Park Avenue, Sarah and Wayland Pond, 414 Park Avenue, Russell Hughes and Mary Tian, 422 Park Avenue. In other items, Paul Flouche of 206 Southwest Street... In other items, Paul Flusch of 206 Southwest Street wrote with concerns about city services. Sean Dakin of 124 Whittier Circle wrote about the speed warning system on Hillwood Avenue. The Electoral Board wrote to thank city council for their support of board initiatives. Dan Lehman wrote with concerns about a beaver at Howard Herman Park. John Murphy reported runoff problems in Pearson Branch, which I believe the director of Public Works worked with him on. And then Vipas requested more public discussion before proceeding with the Park Avenue Great Streets project. And that is it.
All right. Thanks very much. Let's move on to the receipt of public comment for folks either in the room or on the Internet joining us here. Do we have speakers who have signed up, Madam Clerk?
Yes, we don't have anybody signed up online, but we do have Tom Gittens and followed by Christopher Ginder.
All right. Welcome, Mr. Gittens.
Good evening, Mayor Tarter, Vice Mayor Hardy, members of the council. Phil, get better quick. Hang in there. My name is Tom, Tom Gittens. I live at 153 West Anandale, yes, here in the city of Falls Church. I also own Art and Frame of Falls Church at our new location, our fourth iteration, still here in the city of Falls Church. I invite you to the south end of the city, to a gallery dedication in the lobby of 307 East Anandale Road, studios at 307.com. A permanent gallery, the Eileen Levy-Angej Smutsky Art Gallery, honoring Eileen Levy, a longtime city resident and fixture within the arts throughout the city. Also honoring longtime current city resident and artist Angej Smutsky. Ironically, on the same day of this event, he will turn 93. Next Sunday, June 25th, 1:00 to 3:00 p.m., 1:15 is the dedication. Not this Sunday, but next Sunday, at 307 East Anandale. After the official dedication, everyone is welcome to visit Art and Frame of Falls Church and studios at 307, with over 30 art and small business studios throughout the entire two-story building. Yes, I said over 30. Join us, and if you know anyone looking for a small business studio space or art studio space, let me know. It's fun, it's free. There will be food, drink, music, art next Sunday, the 25th, 307 East Anandale Road. You're all invited, 1:00 p.m. Thank you very much.
Before you head down, which building is it?
If you're familiar with Hillwood and Anandale, where they intersect across the street from Oldy Grocery Store, behind Hillwood Mart Gas Station, most inexpensive gas in the city, there is a two-story building across from Galloway Church, from Anandale Road, Galloway, and across is a two-story building, hidden away. We're on the line, we're still in the city.
All right. And the next thing I would ask you is, could you send us an email to the effect of what you just said?
Absolutely.
Because otherwise...
You can also look at the ad in the Falls Church News Press coming up.
All right. Send us that email, and I think many of us will try to be there. But thank you much.
You're welcome.
We appreciate it, and I expect some of us, or all of us, will see you on Sunday, week from Sunday. So thanks very much.
Wonderful.
All right.
Yes, next we have Tom Ginder, followed by Fred Thompson.
It's Christopher Ginder.
Wow. I couldn't get your last name, and I couldn't get your first name, so I'll start your comments a little bit late. Sorry about that. I apologize.
Thank you. Mayor Tarter, members of the council, thanks for having me here tonight. I'm here to represent Gresham Place Home Association, I'm the vice president. And my ask here is simple. We have a signal outage.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Good to hear you.
Okay. We have a signal outage at the end of our street that we've been working through for the past year and a half. And it's not so much an outage, it's a synchronization issue with the Arlington City and County, where we have essentially a blind left turn that's occurring. If you're turning out of our subdivision onto the main road, there's no synchronization with the two other lights. So you have an ongoing safety concern for residents within our community trying to make a left-hand turn. We have tried to work with the several entities without success. And so my ask is pretty simple. Number one, I believe there's a Smart Cities grant that may help us regain the use of the signal. After a couple of applications, we haven't gotten any dates or promises of when that reconciliation or remediation would occur. There is some work that's scheduled to happen between Gresham Place and North Washington, but that's not going to be completed until the end of the decade. And this is more of an immediate safety concern that we have now within our community. So it's unnerving, it's dangerous, and there are some more vulnerable elderly residents within our community, where you've got to have pretty good reaction times to get out on that blind turn, and it's an accident waiting to happen. So again, I would just ask for your support and consideration of either moving it up in the schedule or helping coordinate with the appropriate bodies within the community to get this reconciled. Again, this is simply a synchronization issue of an existing light. I'm not even asking for a new light, I'm just asking for better communication and coordination within some of the entities that we need just to get this resolved. So, thank you.
Thank you. And this is something that isn't on our radar. It has been for some time. You mentioned a year and a half, and we understand your frustration, the amount of time that's passed and the difficulty in getting this resolved. I'm going to ask the city manager maybe to give us an update on where things stand.
So as the council is well aware of this issue, and it is very much on our radar screen, it is a situation where Arlington County owns that signal, and they operate it. And they did change the functioning of it about the time that you've noticed, and it was brought to our attention. And they're very firm that that's the way they're going to keep it. So it will require a new signal, essentially. And so we have worked with the city council to have funds made available for that. We're also working, as you noted earlier, with our project manager on the Smart Cities grant, where we believe we're going to be able to get this done. I do apologize for tonight. I don't have a date as to when we're going to deliver that, but I will follow up with you in the Gresham Place HOA with that schedule.
No, I appreciate that. Well, we just don't want to have an accident, and then we're being reactionary. This is something I just wanted to make you guys aware of again, and I appreciate your consideration of, and honestly, the hard work that you do every day on behalf of the city and our association. I appreciate it. It's just, it's going to happen, it's just a matter of when, because that traffic is increasing more and more on South Washington, or North Washington, rather, as we have the new development that are happening at the Whole Foods, it's only going to get worse. So this is not a situation that's going to get better with age, it is only going to get worse. So I appreciate your help, and the timeliness would be appreciated. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Our next speaker, Madam Clerk?
Fred Thompson.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, before we get to Fred, I wonder if the city manager could give us regular reports on how we're doing on that signal. It is something that we view as a high priority.
I will do that.
Thank you.
Mr. Thompson?
Okay. Well, I'm here because last week, firstly, I apologize for the coughing. I was feeling fine, and then suddenly started coughing, so any speakers that interrupted, my apologies. I was here, I was watching a premiere, I was trying to look at what was done on your May 2023 session, and I accidentally brought up the May 2022 segment, and saw myself, talking about T zones. And I gave some thought as to where are we now and why are we where we are? Because 12 months later, we are still a couple of months away from a first reading. There was a first reading that night. I think the reason that we haven't had more progress on this is really back to what I raised at that time, that I think the council, by starting with legislation, by starting with very specific requirements, has cut off some discussion and cut off some expertise that you could have benefited from, and it can still benefit from, from the Planning Commission. We talked about them, and they have a lot of expertise and knowledge in this area. And I think when we went forward with the proposal, first of all, it was a tip to have one size fits all, one set of rules fits all. When we come back and discovered, there are very 58 very different properties with very different aspects to them, and one size really doesn't fit all. Second of all, there's been a real review of city plans as a result of this discussion. And we found that lots of, I mean, a summary, and I report to you this past week, basically, huge swaths of the city are being taken out of consideration for the T zone. By my count, we go from 3% of the city under consideration to 17 tenths of the city under consideration because of the changes that take out the T2 activity, North Washington, South Washington, 24-hour fitness. Lots of parts of this have sort of drifted away, or they really don't, since they don't fit the single set of rules, there needs to be some adjustment and adapting of what does, what can be done. And then secondly, the actual code itself, we found, both in the case of affordable housing, there was a discussion, but also to understand what property owners' rights were if their homes became prohibited uses. We turned out the information in the city code was wrong, not in accord with the state code. So there does seem to be a challenge, a sort of a threshold that we have to get that right. So what can we do going forward? My first thought is that we should eliminate the overall objective of having one size fits all, one set of rules fits all. Clearly doesn't. The first step's been taken by suggesting that T2 and T1 stay separate. But I think a lot of property should be left in T1 until we can figure out what the actual property and design is and how that fits the city plans. And then second, I'd say give the Planning Commission time to align this proposal, whatever it might be. Give it time to align that with the city plans and what we want in each of our neighborhoods, because that is, we don't want the same thing in each of our neighborhoods. If there's one thing clear for this discussion, that's it. And then the city staff, time to do marketing studies. And then finally, I would say, we made a concrete proposal on behalf of Broadway for townhouses. I hope the city will not feel we have to have one solution, but we'll look at how we can use that information, how we can use those ideas going forward to kind of come up with a plan that can fit, I think that best fits our neighborhood, but to find areas where we can tailor the solution to the problem rather than come up with a single solution that fits all.
Thank you much. Much appreciated. Madam Clerk, any other speakers, or is that it?
No, sir. That was it.
All right. Unless anyone else wishes to speak, you are certainly most welcome to. Seeing none, we're going to move on to the report of the city manager. Mr. Shields?
Thank you, Mayor Tarter, members of council. So I'll speak first to the schedule that has been discussed for consideration of the transitional zones that was just mentioned a moment ago. We plan to have a walking tour on the night of June 26th, and that would start at 6:00 p.m. That's prior to the regular meeting of the city council of the same night. We'll have more information out to the public on that, but I just wanted to note that date. We're working towards a July 10th work session to discuss code language reflecting the policy discussions we had at work session last week. We are scheduling or just communicating out to the public a target date of a first reading of the revised code language on August 7th. The Planning Commission then has two meetings between August 7th and September 11th, and we'd be working towards, if the council deems it to be timely, for second consideration or second reading, final consideration on Monday, September 11th. So I wanted to just note that schedule. The council has discussed that one time at one of the council's agenda-setting meetings, and wanted to put that out there for the community to be aware of that discussion. And if the council has any final comments on that schedule, we certainly listen to those before we start publicizing those dates. The walking tour, we are publicizing now so that the public is aware of that opportunity. Second, I want to note that tomorrow night, on June 13th, we'll have an Affordable Homeownership Program briefing for people who might be interested in participating in the city's new homeownership program. What this program does is, we are in partnership with the NHP Foundation, whereby the city is using grant funds through the Amazon Reach program to purchase homes in the city, put affordable housing covenants on those properties, rehabilitate them, and then resell them to qualified people in the city. Our high priority people in the city are persons with disabilities, persons that work in the city, and persons that live in the city currently. Those are the people that have the highest priority for opportunities to pursue homeownership in the city through this program. The goal is to make new homes or homes available and affordable for people making between 50% and 120% of area median income. So June 13th, 6:30 p.m., here in the Dogwood Room, if you would be interested in learning more about that program. Two other things just to report out on. One, just as a save the date, this year, we are bringing fireworks back on Independence Day, and we're planning to shoot fireworks off with live music on Sunday, July 2nd, at Meridian High School. So all are welcome. We look forward to bringing fireworks back to the city of Falls Church. And then lastly, I just want to thank all the people who were involved in two big events in the city over the past two weeks. First, the Memorial Day celebration. Thanks everybody who came and everybody who participated in that great day, and also to all our Reckon Park staff, DPW staff, police sheriff, and Office of Emergency Management and Office of Communications, who worked so hard to make that day successful. And then lastly, I want to thank all of the volunteers with the Tanner Hill Heritage Foundation for the Blues Festival that occurred on Saturday. And also thank our Reckon Park staff, sheriff, OEM, and OCOM, who worked to help make that program successful. Tori McKinney has led, has been the producer of that concert now for several years, and it was, I think, the most well-attended blues festival that we've ever had, and it was a very successful day for the city of Falls Church. That's all I have tonight to report, and be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments for Mr. Shields?
And Mr. Mayor, we generally have, hi. We generally have council requests after the city manager's report, but it looks like it fell off the agenda.
I saw that. That's why, I know, I know. It's no worries at all.
We'll add it back in.
Yeah. So any, Ms. Conley?
I just have one, and it's just an interesting date coalescence. You said September 11th would be the date that we'd be voting on, the second reading on T zones. And I wish that former council member Steve Rogers was here, because he's the one that has told me many times that September 10th, 2001, was when we approved the first special exception ordinance. Mr. Snyder was here as well. But that's what led to us being allowed to build the Broadway Building to begin with, was September 10th, 2001. So 22 years later, we're back at doing the same thing.
All right. Interesting. Unless we have anything else, let's move on to business on the agenda. Madam Clerk, will you call the first item?
Yes, we have, for first reading, we have TO 23-10, ordinance to amend ordinances 2044, 2045, 2056, and 2058 regarding the budget of expenditures and revenues appropriating funds for the fiscal year 2023 for the general fund, the school operating fund, school community services fund, the cable access fund, and the capital improvement program funds.
All right. Thank you very much. Ms. Bawa?
Good evening, Mayor Tarter, members of the council. We have for you the first reading of the last budget amendment for fiscal year 2023. This was discussed at the work session last Monday in details after a full discussion on the third quarter results. So I will just highlight a couple of things that have changed since then. If we look at item number five on page three of the staff report, the allocation request for allocation of underspending has gone down to $529,000. I apologize for the typo in there. So we've dropped $60,000. That was being requested earlier, $30,000 for the parking study and $30,000 for commercial use study, because it appears we're not going to be able to encumber those funds, get into contract by June 30th, so we will request those as part of the carryforwards. So we are requesting allocation of $529,200, and that would be made up from $160,000 from council contingencies and $369,200 from transfer from other departments. And that was the only change made. I will also highlight a couple of the CIP changes, program funds that are part of the budget amendment. We are requesting an allocation of a V dot grant in the amount of $529,200. We are requesting an allocation of a VDOT grant in the amount of $525,324 for the Berman Park-Greenway Downs project, and the project is expected to come over budget. So we had requested these grant funds and we were granted, so requesting allocation of that. And secondly, we're requesting to reprogram funding from South Washington POAs, program South Washington Maple, which Avenue Project, which is expected to come under budget, $56,000 to be transferred from that to North Washington and Columbia Intersection Improvements Project to pay for the increased costs and materials. So for the infrastructure program, traffic signals. So with that, I'll stop here and see if there are any questions.
Caroline, yes. Ms. Leon?
Thanks, Ms. Bawa. So we've got between capital improvements and the general fund, about $156K for traffic signals and masked arms. Is this going to do it? Is this just right, Mr. Shields? Is there anything else we need to cover on traffic signals, the SAVR mini-crisis on traffic signals?
It is enough to have us emerge from the current difficulties that we're having with intersections in the city, but the council did appropriate more money from capital reserves so that we can do preemptive maintenance on our signals throughout the city. And so that will be our plan for FY '24. This money is to help us address the issues that we're dealing with right now.
Immediately. Okay. And as we, second question, when we take, good to hear that we're, we've itemized the bonuses. So this table wasn't listed most to lowest, but when we take a look at bonuses, we've got public safety first, public works second, library third. And I think just for transparency on this, this is just as a result of year-end reviews? Is this based on folks that received, you know, satisfactory and above or?
So this goes back to when the city council approved bonuses for city staff as we're pulling out of COVID. And so these dollar amounts really are driven entirely by the size of the departments.
Got it. So this is a performance base.
These were uniform, performance bonus, these were all uniform bonuses for all staff as we're pulling out of COVID.
I just want to clarify that then. And that's it for me for questions on this. Mr. Mayor?
All right. Thank you very much. Ms. Hardy?
Thank you. Ms. Bawa, I can make a small request. So when things change from work session to first reading, if you could just do the gray highlights, because I was trying to figure out where the numbers didn't add up. So thank you for mentioning that both the parking study and the commercial uses were taken out. So hopefully we can get to both of those studies because I do think they are important. So it's too bad we can't encumber the funds. I was glad to see that Mike Bastar Plan is going to get funded as part of this. Do we have an ETN when we might see the output of that?
Let me get back with you on that before I say the wrong dates. We will be able to move quickly on our contract on it. I do know that. I will have these dollars encumbered before the end of this fiscal year, which is only two weeks from now, but I'll get the schedule of work out to the city council and to the community.
Great. And I was glad to see language in there about acquiring right of way to have complete streets. I think I've mentioned before that I personally have an interest in adopting a complete streets policy. So anytime we pave, let's think about all the different infrastructure we have for all modes of mobility, i.e. the complete streets. On Berman Park, that project nearly is coming in twice as much. Is that something we should expect in general for kind of infrastructure projects or is that one just, was it underscoped and underbudgeted?
So we're seeing the same thing for the WNOD trail crossings, just all of our projects are coming in sometimes about double what the original engineers' estimates are.
And some of these projects, as you know, we've applied for the grants quite a few years in advance, and then when it comes in, the cost can be higher and then aggravated by the current economic state.
Okay. I know that, I think, June 26th at the end of the month, we're getting a CIP and work plan update, so maybe that's a good time to talk about in general our projects. And as we look at year-end funds, which will be this fall, whether we need to look at a couple of projects that could be coming in above budget that we've already prioritized and therefore need to plug some holes in.
That's exactly right. And one other I'll add to the list is the community center HVAC system that also is coming, or estimates are just going way up. So we'll be having that discussion with you.
And I imagine that we are not unique in this. Are fellow localities also experiencing that kind of inflation?
Yes.
Okay. Last question. On the opioid dollars, I know it's a pretty nominal amount. I think it's like $150,000 over 17 years. I think we're appropriating $1,200 of it this time. Have we already received further funds? And this is a request I got from a constituent. Can it go towards more direct support and abatement instead of just training? And have we applied those dollars that way?
So I think that this merits probably a better briefing for the city council on our plan for these dollars. Our human services staff do have some, I think, very good ideas on things that we can do for the benefit of the community. We're also working with the schools on having these funds available for our school system. So rather than sort of giving a quick response tonight, I think it's worthy of a fuller discussion at a later date.
Yeah. Where I'm going with it is I know that between behavioral health hiring and staff needs, that's been an area that we've had trouble hiring across the region, and then Narcan Distribution. So those are two areas that seem like high priorities across the region, so I'd rather see more funds go towards things like that rather than dribs and drabs, losing some of this funding. That's it. Thank you.
Ms. Duncan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've been thinking about this since we talked about it at work session, and just wanted to float an idea, not for inclusion in this resolution, but just for future consideration, that anytime that we have revenue in excess of the budget, whether that revenue comes from underspending or excess revenue, exactly brought in through taxation, I would like us to consider an arrangement, language be included in basically the supplemental appropriations bill that says that first, we meet the unassigned fund balance obligations that we have and stock up the unassigned fund balance to, you know, the level that we say we wanted. And then second, that we create a lockbox for the equivalent of one cent on the tax rate that we would discuss at the next opportunity when we are doing the full fiscal year budget. I'm not trying to make it mandatory. I'm not saying council is required to set aside that money, but I would like us to at least force ourselves to have a discussion earlier on about whether tax relief fits into the picture of all the other unmet needs. We talk a lot about unmet needs, and we all know there's a lot of them. But in my mind at least, as I've said before, one important unmet need is trying to provide taxpayers with a certain amount of rebate for the inconvenience and the disruption that we all know is happening because of the economic development that is so very important for the city's future. So I just want to put that out there tonight as something that I would like to see us discuss before we do another supplemental appropriations bill like this one. I think we will have, you know, the year-end closeout discussion in September sometime. And I would just offer that as a suggestion. If there are other good ideas, interested in hearing them, but that's just one idea I'd like to put out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Mr. Snyder?
Yeah, I think council member Duncan has raised some interesting proposals. I look forward to discussing them further. I think one of the issues we're wrestling with is we close our budget for the future fiscal year starting in July, and it's only a week later that we got the numbers for the current fiscal year. And I'm wondering if in the future, we can't bring those two together to better give us an indication as to whether there can be a different and lower tax rate than we're assuming based upon only the projections rather than the excesses that may be coming from the prior year. So my hope is that it's also a calendar issue, but I think council member Duncan raises some interesting ideas.
All right. Do we have a motion regarding this item?
Motion to grant first reading to TO 23-10 and schedule for public hearing, second reading and adoption on June 26, 2023.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Hiscott on the second. Is there any public comment regarding this matter? Seeing none, the matter is closed to the public. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Conley? Yes. Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Leon?
Yes.
Ms. Sean Hiscott?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
And Mayor Charter?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you, council.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Bawa. Will you call the next item, please?
Yes. Next, we have TR 23-16, resolution to approve the Fifth Amendment to Comprehensive Agreement authorized in Resolution 2019-15 as subsequently amended in Resolutions 2021-01, 2021-23, 2022-05, and 2022-17 with FCGP Development LLC for the West Falls Church Economic Development Project and authorize the city manager to execute the amendment to extend the closing date for senior living pad D1 Phase 1B.
All right. Thank you. And Ms. Mester, are you going to do the staff report for this?
Certainly, Mayor. I do want to acknowledge as I start that we are joined this evening by Hoffman's Senior VP of Development. Mary Beth is here so she can answer any questions that council may have after I do an overview of the staff report and the request of council this evening. This is a follow-up to the work session that we had during your May 22nd council meeting during the city manager section at that point. So as the title says, we are bringing forth Comprehensive Amendment Number Five for council's consideration, and this is being necessitated by the withdrawal of Trammell Crow as the senior living developer. There are two motions that are put forward tonight for council's consideration. The first one is moving to adopt TR 23-16, which would extend the term for 13 months, and that is the staff recommendation, and speak a little bit about why in a moment. The other would just be doing a 12-month extension. The current comprehensive agreement would expire tomorrow, June 13th, 2023, hence why this item is being brought forth to council. So under the amendment, some key things that are being requested is to extend that period to July 15th, 2024, as I mentioned, and that is to allow the WF developer to work out the final agreement. They do have promising leads for a new senior living partner, and they do believe in working through that, that 13 months is needed versus a simple 12, and so that's why that's being brought forward. With this additional year extension, it would also extend the substantial completion date, and so that would be July 15th, 2031. Now, in exchange for this extension, a couple of things are being offered. One is to cover the city's legal fees, not to exceed $5,000, which is the current estimate from the outside legal counsel. Also, to make sure there's a temporary flashing pedestrian signal at Mustang Alley in Haycock before school starts this fall to ensure safety, and that would be in place until the permanent masked arms can be procured and installed because they are currently on a, I think it was a 25-week delay for delivery. And so that's what the developers offered there. Also, to be back before council by September 30th of this year to identify the senior living operator and developer. And also added, at the request of council, additional milestone of commencing construction 60 months post the closing, and that closing is targeted to be that July 15th, 2024 date. And then also, as a follow-up to the discussion with council, the developer has agreed to surface apply or hang a decorative treatment, some art to that large concrete wall that's on the D2 garage facing Haycock until the building next to it is built or the property has been transferred. I do want to note for this one particular item, at the dius, you do have a revised Comprehensive Amendment Number Five that refines some of the language related to that art facade just this evening, and it would be on page three, and it's showing in track changes. It is not a substantial content change. It just clarifies the obligation and the responsibility of the developer successors or assigns, and this was a dialogue requested by the city attorney with the Hoffman attorney. So no substantial change, but good clarification language, and Ms. Gillette can confirm, but she did review and okay the language that's before you. So I just wanted to flag that the motion tonight would adopt the CA as presented in your packet with that one additional change. All other terms and conditions of the original comprehensive agreement do remain in place, and the staff report outlines some of the additional issues that we have covered previously, and also the developer presented some of their financial economic impacts that resulted in this. We'd be glad to answer any questions, but I wasn't going to go through them tonight. I do that question-based. With that, glad to answer any questions or if you wish to hear from the senior VP.
All right. Thank you very much. We appreciate your assistance, developers' assistance, and the city attorney and others' work to get this resolved. Let's go ahead and open up to questions. Anyone have any questions or comments? Ms. Leon?
Cindy, thank you for that. Can you focus and further elaborate, and it could just be me up here, but how, what is the correlation between approving a 13-plus-month extension for the, for Locking in and a senior living developer with the two-year pushout of the substantial completion of construction? So how did 13 months end up to two years on the back end?
Well, at a high level, I can answer that, and then certainly would welcome any additional input, but with a new senior living developer and operator, there may need to be changes to the SEP, the site plan, everything that's already been approved. So that would trigger some time to go through that land use approval process, and then of course, building permits permitting and so forth. So they Gantt charted it out so that we could have a reasonable timeline, and I didn't bring that timeline with me, although attached is your presentation from the May 22nd. So if need be, I could ask Sophie to bring it up, but that's how it changes who, when they get the developer under contract and close, to being able to commence construction.
Okay. Well, thanks for explaining that you actually Gantt charted that out at first blush. I just had, I was 13 translating to 24 months. I just didn't quite get that. I am really appreciative of the fact that we're actually, as part of this extension, providing some support for safety, right, for the students. So I definitely want to say a thank you for inserting that into the language and making sure that we're covering that from that perspective. But no further questions from me. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes?
I may. To add to the answer that the deputy city manager gave earlier, that the 24-month extension for substantial completion is in part also due because to the fact that this closing deadline has been extended before. It was extended in 2022, and when it was extended, the completion deadline wasn't extended in parallel. So, and so now we're playing catch-up. So in April of 2022, there was a Third Amendment which extended the closing deadline to 13 months following closing deadline to 13 months following the Phase 1 closing, and so the gap has widened now that, since we didn't extend substantial completion in cooperation with that.
Thank you. Ms. Hardy?
Thank you. So first of all, kudos to whoever wrote the staff report in that new section that has the four issues to consider. I don't know if that was Ms. Gillette or if Mr. Shields. Thank you, Ms. Gillette. I could tell there was a new touch on there, so I thought that was excellent staff analysis. So thank you for helping us unpack that, understand it. I thought that was very well done. Building off what Caroline talked about with, obviously, all the dates, and frankly, when you're past 2025, it almost feels like fake dates, but I guess more of a message to the developer in the room. Hopefully, after we hear the name of the operator this September, you guys will move in due course and actually start construction well before September, July 15, 2029, and obviously substantial completion. Hopefully, 2031 is really an outside, outside date, because I would hate for this to start running into the Phase 2 commitments. And I would ask Mr. Shields if you could refresh our memories on what the deadline or timeline for Phase 2 roughly was, because at this point, this feels like it's starting to butt into that, right?
So I'm going to go off of memory, but Phase 2 would start with, in 2029, and then there's some, Hoffman can purchase some extensions to start on Phase 2, so there'd be a payment to the city, they've got an extra year, and they can do that three years. And so the outside start date for Phase 2 would be in 2032. I'm going off of memory, but if Ms. Afadazian wants to correct that, we can give you, give you that additional information.
We would love to see the senior building open well before Phase 2, so thank you. Also echo the thanks that we are getting the pedestrian signal as well as covering the garage facade, which we've gotten so many comments on, so it'll be great to see progress on that. I guess the third question is for the developer in the room. I think we talked about this briefly last time, but assuming we approve the CA amendment tonight, and you go through the process to identify your operator and then go through a new SESP, do you anticipate your operator will largely use the same shell, or should we expect and have staff prepare to go through that very long SESP process again?
I'd love to be able to answer that question, but I haven't had the opportunity yet to get into those, that level of detail with the proposed replacement senior developer. It's still very early in our negotiations, but I think that discussion will happen with, certainly before we come back to see you in September.
Great, thank you. That's it for me.
Mr. Snyder?
Sure, thanks a lot. I think Councilmember Hardy well expressed one of the concerns I've had, is the lengthy element of this, of this agreement and the hope that it can be done much more quickly. So, and we did negotiate and get some things in return for making a compromise, so I like that. I'm interested in determining whether there's any financial impact to the city with regard to this, this proposal.
So, the, the impact to the city is really related to the, to the delay, and the delay is already a fact, with, with Trammell Crowe electing not to proceed under the entitlements that they had already gained and the contractual, the contractual relationship that they had already struck. So with that delay, there will be a delay in a portion of the real estate taxes that we were budgeting or planning for in FY '25. So not next fiscal year, which the, you know, the budget that you just adopted, but the year after that, with the delay of the senior, the impact will be about $250,000 to the city in FY '25.
Okay, pretty concerned about that. Thank you.
If I remember from the staff report, it's 250 out of a million that we are accounting for, for the whole project, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's an important piece of context, yes.
Yeah, that starts at line 179 through 215, lays out the financial impacts.
All right. Let me ask a question or two of the developer, if you don't mind. With respect to the covering of the garage, what are you all expecting to do there?
I wish I had all these answers tonight. We have been so engrossed in negotiating, just getting this agreement in place. We have thoughts that range anywhere from mural paint of some sort to like a wrap, perhaps some graphics. The gamut is, is open, and we certainly are happy to come back and discuss it with, with you or your designee at the point where we're ready to do something, to have a couple of ideas that we want to put out, put forth, but nothing is set at this moment in time.
Got it. I think that would be nice to hear what you have in mind. I would say if you don't know what you have in mind, certainly the schools might be able to give you some ideas as well. That is kind of the entrance to our high school right now.
Sure.
So, but yes, I think that'd be great if you were willing to come back and talk to us as you get closer to your.
Sure, yes, absolutely. You know, we thought also about perhaps something branding, and I was actually thinking of the schools when that came up, but the condition language has been limited to 5% of the surface area to be branding, but.
Well, branding by what, your branding or our school's branding?
Any branding.
So I would say the city would probably be most agreeable to branding if you consider the school.
Sure.
So I personally have no issue with more than 5%. I'm not sure I even consider that branding to mention the school, but if you wanted to do something school-related, entirely school-related, my guess is we would be agreeable to that.
Okay.
I think the notion of the branding is for your own branding, and then sort of signage and the use of signage there.
Sure.
But anyway, why don't you come back and see us? We'd love to. Secondly, I would just bring to your attention, which I'm sure you probably ought to know, there's a lot of like, you know, concrete that spilled on around the site. It's kind of a mess as it spills over, and somewhat understandable, given how much is going on there. It's a super-dense construction site. I mean, super-dense. But I don't know if there's anything you could do to just make sure that, kind of be a little bit more on top of what's going on there, and to the extent, you know, a big slop of concrete plops on the ground, that we do hear from folks about that. There are a lot of school kids there and a lot of traffic. You have an ongoing shopping center and the like. So I would just ask if you could give some additional consideration, have your superintendent, you know, walk the perimeter or, you know, ride herd on your concrete contractors and the like?
We hear, every time one of those complaints comes to you, it comes to us, and we deal with it immediately as best we can. And certainly, every one of our general contractors on the site gets a talking to by our, our construction management team. So I feel your pain. I'm sorry about construction. It's a messy business, and we'll try to get out of your hair as soon as possible.
Yeah, I'm not so worried about that. Like, I get it. We know what all the trucks are, but when they start slopping and the mess part is not necessarily part of construction. I mean, it is something that I'm sure you don't tolerate, and we don't want to either. So I would just say, to the extent you're able to provide some additional supervision, particularly around the periphery of the site, we do have kids coming and going, buses, a lot of after-school activities. So it's important to us to make sure that the site is not just safe, but also clean and, you know, the like. So, but with that, we look forward to seeing, you know, this project get built out, and we look, we're happy that you've gone as far as you have so far. I think you're making some great progress. In terms of just timeline, maybe you could give us just a quick update on when you expect some of the milestones coming up with the majority of the project, not the senior part, but do you have any information on some of your milestones?
Well, I gave you a pretty good overview at the last meeting, so I haven't got all those dates committed to memory, but the first building that will finish is the medical office building that Trammell Crowe is building, and I think they're expecting to be done towards the end of this year.
Is that substantial completion, or is that occupied?
Substantial completion.
When do you expect it to be occupied?
Well, we're not the landlord in that case.
Yeah.
They're negotiating directly with tenants, and I understand they have a bead on some very good tenants, medical tenants, that will take a good portion of that building. So then, of course, you'll have tenant build-out associated with that. But on the properties that, the buildings that we're building, one of the garages that is going to actually serve the medical office building will be finished in this, this summer, the one that's closest to the high school. The hotel right next to it, I think we're targeting the end of the year to have that substantially complete. That one's moving very quickly. The condo building, I think the following year, the following fall, October of '24. And then the apartment building, that's the 400-unit apartment building right next to Route 7. I believe that's about a year and a half away as well.
Got it. And you don't have to speak to this if it's not publicly, you know, information you want to share. The grocery, the grocery store, do you have any information on that? And again, if you're not able to speak to it, that's fine.
I'm sorry, I'm not.
That's fine, that's fine.
We are, we're actively pursuing a replacement tenant.
Okay. Well, unless we have any other tenants, thank you very much, or not any tenants, any comments or questions, thank you for coming out this evening. Do we have a motion that anyone would like to make?
Mayor?
Yes.
I may. There's, about the art on the D2 garage facade, is there any need for us to incorporate some kind of approval process into our agreement, or do we want to add any kind of revisit to the city on that, on that?
So, I mean, if you, I think if you are publicly stating you'll come back to us, I'm comfortable with your word as a developer here publicly that you'll come back and we can speak.
And then I just overheard Mr. Shields indicate that, of course, we have to come back for a permit.
Right.
For something like that. So there's also that opportunity to review and take it up the channels.
Okay.
And then the, the second point I wanted to make on the art on the D2 garage facade is the deadline for hanging it is the Phase 1 substantial completion, which is May 13, 2029. And I don't know if there's a way to, if we should.
So we're talking about the.
Phase 1 substantial completion?
Right, not Phase 1B, which is a little farther out, but Phase 1 is 2029.
Right. Well, I, when I, when we said substantial completion, what I'm thinking is the date that we're planning to deliver the rest of the buildings that are under construction right now.
Okay.
Those are basically Phase 1. We carved out the medical office, excuse me, the senior building now to be Phase 1B. So I think you're good, because the last time that I met with you and I presented the schedule for delivery of the remaining, the building's under construction now, I think the, the outside date is like January of '25, so it's not as far out as what you're.
So the contract allows to 2029, but you're saying actual substantial completion's going to be much sooner.
Much sooner than that, yes.
And you're talking about, Art, are you talking about the garage facing the school? Is that what you're talking about?
I'm talking about the.
The new, the new concrete wall.
Oh, the new, well, the wall we got to get done way sooner than that, and I don't know when you're thinking about having it done.
When construction is substantially complete, which is January of 2025. Otherwise, we're worried it's going to get messed up by all the dirt and dust and junk that's floating around out there.
Got it. I tell you, I mean, that seems like a really long time to have a really ugly blank wall, and I don't know what the solution is to that, because I get it, you don't want it to be messed up, whatever you might do, but we also don't want to have a really blank, blank wall to be staring at for the next, I don't know, what is that, a year and a half or something like that?
Eight months.
That's a long time. So I don't know if we have some ideas on how we might treat that, whether a banner could be put up or something like that as an interim measure, or maybe a permanent measure, but it seems like an awful long time to be staring at that blank wall.
I'm, I mean, I, I don't think, it's a construction site. I was trying to tie it to you're staring at incomplete buildings right now, which aren't beautiful either, and I'm hoping that, when it's all delivered to you, all beautiful, you'll be very pleased with the final result. It just seemed to make sense to us that, that it would be tied to the delivery of the entire project.
Got it. So, I mean, I understand what you're saying. I think the problem is that it's just, doesn't look very good right now. I think your project's going to look great. That's all our hope and expectation. That wall is just a big concrete wall, and I don't know what the answer to that is. I understand your concern, but hopefully you understand ours as well. It's a big blank wall. I don't know if anyone has any thoughts they'd like to share. Even just painting it, maybe, would be an improvement of some color or the other. And I know that might not be a perfect solution, but it's, it's going to be covered up. Wyatt seems to have the solution now, so we'll eagerly wait.
How difficult is it to project something on it? Like, a lot of, you know, you go to Asian cities, or look at that, there are a lot of like projections onto blank concrete walls. Yeah, or like on the side of the state theater, it was all brick, but they had different visuals. Didn't seem particularly difficult, and it's nothing, nothing that would get messy.
The problem is that only works at night. Like, the visuals, a lot of times, are not going to be visible during the day because it's light out. So I don't know if that's a full solution, and maybe it is, I don't know, or the best we can do.
I like it. I think it's a good, good start. We'd have it halfway looking good more quickly.
I'm, this, I, I, I'm not authorized to deviate.
Sure.
From what's been proposed, and I'm a little bit in between a rock and a hard place because our, our expiration of this, this occurs tomorrow. I mean, we can make, we can, we can make an effort to try to do it sooner. I'm just reluctant to make a commitment as I stand here.
So let me ask you this. I'm, we're sympathetic of that, and been in your shoes, too. So here's some possibilities for you to bring back, and I would just ask maybe for tonight's purposes, that you give good faith, you as, I mean, the developer, give good faith, consideration to work with our city manager to come up a solution that is reasonable in cost, and given the circumstances that it's an interim condition. But one would be some kind of lighting, decorative lighting, some kind of interesting lighting that you throw up onto the wall, like it's a big screen. That could be projecting something. It may not work because you got construction in front of it, maybe there's no electricity, I don't know. But that's a possibility, particularly at night. Another could be just painting the wall, you know, pick a color, Mustang colors, you know, a brick color, I don't know, just painting the wall. Even though it's not perfect, it, it's going to get dusty, and it's not going to be absolutely perfect, but it'll be better. And the third option could be putting a banner up, just some kind of banner that's yoinked by the corners of some kind of vinyl banner that's going to be up there, and again, not perfect, but maybe better than a nothing. So, and if there's anything else you can come up in the meantime, but those are just some options to take back to your folks and to work in good faith with the city manager to try to resolve this before a year and a half goes by.
Sure, I certainly.
Okay. Does anybody have anything else they want to add to that? All right, if not, thank you. Does any member of the public wish to speak to this matter? Seeing none, the matter's closed, the public. Do we have a motion?
Move to adopt TR 23-16.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Hardy on the second. Any further comment? Madam Clerk?
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Leon?
Yes.
Ms. Sean Hiscott?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
I'm staying.
Mayor Charter?
Uh, yes.
Motion carries six to zero with one abstention. Thank you, counsel.
All right, thank you. Let's keep moving. Next up is the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to remove anything from the consent agenda? If not, let's have a motion. Do we have a motion?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, sorry.
Phil, did you want to make a motion?
Uh, I wanted to, let me grab my papers here. I wanted to just ask a couple of questions about a couple of the items.
All right.
Uh, the library books and the police expense. Do I, can I ask those questions without removing them, or?
So let me ask you, the police expense, are you referring to the computer aided dispatch?
Yes.
So that'll be voted on as a separate item?
Oh, sorry.
So why don't you ask your question about the other ones, and we'll see if we can go ahead and just vote on them all. What's your other question?
Uh, on the two library items, so the total amount of money is $120,000 plus $330,000, so that's $350,000 for new materials, basically, for the library. I just sort of want the public to be aware that we're investing, you know, in a serious way with the continuing refreshing of the collection of the library, and I didn't want that to go unmentioned if we just voted right through on the consent agenda. I think it's a good thing. As I understand it, that money is already allocated in the FY '23, '24 budget, so it's not like new money or drawing from underspending or any of the other pots of excess money. If that's correct, then just wanted to make note of that.
All right, duly noted. With that notation, do we have a motion?
I move to adopt the consent agenda.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Leon on the second. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Leon?
Yes.
Ms. Sean Hiscott?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mayor Charter?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's move on to other business.
Yes, we have a request.
Yes, we have a request to authorize the city purchasing agent to purchase an upgraded hardware and software records management and computer-aided dispatch system for the police department not to exceed $200,000.
All right. Mr. Shields, a brief summary of the item.
Thank you, Mayor Carter. Members of council, I will note that we do have Major Juwan Chetri on the call as well as Captain Steve Rao, who's our lead on procuring this system for the city. The city has a, for the past 21 years, had a computer-aided dispatch. It keeps all of the records, all moving violations. Basically, it's kind of the heart of the operating system for our police department and their communication with the dispatch booth. This appropriation is partially funded in the FY '23 budget to the tune of about $100,000, and then $100,000 is for the renewal of the contract. Then the annual cost going forward will be $100,000 per year, which is a slight increase over the $85,000 per year that we're currently paying to maintain the system. That's a very brief overview of the system. It is kind of the core system for the operation of the department, and I'll stop there. And if there are any questions, I will refer them to Captain Rao and to Major Chetri.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Duncan.
So unlike the previous items on the library, my understanding from reading the materials is that a certain amount of this money does come from underspending that is repurposed for this, so we are drawing from the underspending pot to get us across the finish line on this. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. And the reason we're voting on all these things is because they're in excess of $100,000, and that's our threshold for requiring a council vote, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Snyder?
Thanks a lot. So does this system allow the tracking of location for cell phones with significant accuracy?
Let me refer that question to our, to our staff, either Captain Rao or Major Chetri.
This is Captain Rao. This is, this is not a system that is going to do cellphone tracking for, if, if that's going to come into play, that's actually going to go through the next-generation 911, which is a separate system.
And how are we moving toward next-gen 911?
We're working, the, the progress on that, I don't have a progress report, we're actually in the midst of converting over to next-gen 911. There are certain benchmarks, working with Virginia Department of Emergency Management as well as Verizon. There's other, there's a bunch of entities that are all working together to get that to move forward. So I don't know the exact end state on that, but it should be by the end of the calendar year.
Okay. That's, that's great news, because I suspect now we're getting a lot of calls from cell phones, and if people can't give you their, their location, it's critical to be able to locate where they are based upon that cellphone call. So thanks for that. And I'd ask the city manager to keep us informed about the status of next-gen 911. Thanks very much.
Other comments or questions regarding this item?
Mr. Mayor, could I ask one more question?
Sure.
So what Mr. Snyder said reminds me, so are we keeping that function in-house? I know that some years ago, there was some discussion that we were going to become part of some regional situation, and does this indicate that we are going to keep it, you know, under our own roof rather than cooperate with Arlington or whatever?
So we are planning to keep 911 dispatch under the city roof. We do stay in very constant contact with Arlington County, obviously, as our 911 callers go into Arlington County, and they dispatch fire directly, and police calls are then transferred to City Hall for dispatch out of this building. This, this system is one that is basically the next generation of the system we currently use. It's used by the town of Herndon as well, and it serves our purposes very well. We don't have current active discussions with Arlington County about potentially merging 911 functions with Arlington County. However, it is something that, because our relationship is so close, it's a conversation that we do have from time to time, but there just, there are not active negotiations on it. When we looked at it more closely, there were some, a number of obstacles, and I won't go into all those details now, but we could, if council would like some, some of those details, we could give an overview of them tonight, but we could also follow up to have a deeper discussion on this at a later date.
Okay. Thanks. I think later date's fine.
All right. Any other discussion? Any member of the public wish to speak to this matter? Seeing none, the matter is closed to public discussion. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to authorize the city's purchasing agent to purchase on behalf of the city an upgraded records management and computer-aided dispatch system in an amount not to exceed $200,000, and would add to that motion request for ongoing status reports on next-gen 911.
All right. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Duncan on the second. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Leon?
Yes.
Ms. Sean Siskott?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
And Mayor Charter?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's move on to business. Not on the agenda? Any standing regional committee reports, liaison reports? Any council member comments not covered earlier minutes? Mr. Duncan?
Just one comment, wanted to alert everybody that the Economic Development Committee of Council is going to have one meeting this summer, try to consolidate our staff efforts on July the 19th, I think, that's a Wednesday, 1:00 in the afternoon. So put your calendar, get your calendars out and mark that date for Wednesday, July 19th, 1:00. Minutes, so March 27th, Monday, line 36, pretty light, pretty light report here tonight. Everything looked pretty good. See what line 36 says? Oh, right, we've identified the city attorney by two different names, and pretty sure she goes by the latter one, but I'm not totally sure, so...
Yeah, I think that was on the staff report title. Okay, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we can...
And line 286, Ms. Sean Siskott, rather than just Sean Siskott, sounds abrupt.
And there is also a correction on line 94. Ms. Conley let me know that Ms. Leon was talking about Berman Park and not Fellows Park, so we changed that.
Oh, gotcha.
You weren't there, were you? Oh, maybe you were.
Yeah. See, I haven't got the one that I missed, so I'll have to abstain on that.
You're going to get that tomorrow, so...
Okay, great. Monday, April 10th, line 71, the only thing I saw was AIDE, I think, A-I-D-E rather than A-I-D.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
So unless anybody has anything else, I move approval of the minutes as corrected for those two dates, April 10th and March 27, 2023.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right. Is there anything else anyone wants to say before we adjourn? 9:06?
Sorry. I had sent a schedule for, sorry, I know, I'll get you up by 9:15. I sent out a schedule regarding our employee reviews, and so make sure you take a look at that. And I didn't hear any objections to scheduling Celeste Performance Appraisal after the mayor's meeting on the 21st, is what I proposed. So we can go ahead with 9:00 AM on the 21st?
Is that June 21st?
June 21st, yeah, because we should do it before July 1st. Wyatt's, we'll have to wait till a little later. Do we have enough people in person for a... Okay. Celeste, did you catch that for your own review?
Uh, I don't, do we?
It sounds like we do have enough...
Are we going to have four people in person?
Sounds like I'm getting...
So we'll have a quorum, and so...
Phil and Caroline will be virtual.
Okay. We'll make sure that happens.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else before we adjourn? Okay. Let's call it a night.